Resolution two thousand nineteen dash fifteen, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the City of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, beginning October one, two thousand eighteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, by increasing the general fund, sanitation, and stormwater fund appropriations and expenditures, and providing for an effective date.
And as section one of this resolution authorizes the budget to be amended to reflect increase in the general fund, section two is amended to reflect increases in sanitation fund, section three to reflect increases in stormwater fund appropriations and expenditures, and the exhibit A breaks down each one of these seven items that were, you know, large emergency items, the first one being the generator for City Hall, which was initially brought to the board back in March, and then more information was needed, ultimately that information was brought forward in May, and by the way, on the second column on this exhibit is the date that the board did approve these items, and so the capital equipment for the generator is three hundred and forty thousand, we don't think it's going to come in, or that amount of money is going to be needed, preliminary quotes have it centered around two hundred and seventy-five thousand, but we just don't know until everything is installed, and the three hundred and forty thousand is the figure that was presented to the board at the time, so it's sort of a, you know, worst-case scenario, but we're increasing the budget so that, you know, we can compensate for anything that develops during the installation. Also, I will mention, as Commissioner Hodges reminded me before the meeting, there is a, we do have a FEMA grant that Karen Paulson submitted to be proactive, the purpose of it is to be proactive, any future hurricanes, and we did submit that for our new generator as a grant through FEMA, so we're hoping to get, if we get some of that money, then that money would go back into restoring this expenditure.
The grant, if I may, is scheduled for seventy-five percent, and even with the change on the project scope, apparently we are still qualified for the grant, so it's just a matter of closing it out, it's a reimbursable grant, so once they make the reimbursement, that money would go back into the general fund.
Walter, excuse me, before you go any further, on this generator also, we originally talked about it being placed in the fire station, and the generator at the fire station being placed down at the rec center, and now that's all changed, this generator now is coming to City Hall, correct? So that should eliminate some of the price also.
Yeah, this was discussed kind of at length at one of the meetings, initially, we wanted to put one big generator at the firehouse that would serve the firehouse, and pipes underneath leading to City Hall, we thought that that would be more feasible, apparently the engineers indicated that that wouldn't be feasible or cost-effective, that it would be more effective to leave that generator alone and have one housed here just for City Hall, so that's the direction that we are going in.
Okay, and then if it should come in extra low, or should say lower, that money then will go back into the general fund?
Yeah, so if, you know, we don't know how aesthetically this is gonna look, or the shell around it, or, you know, or any other things developed that could increase the costs, so we'd rather go with the three hundred and forty thousand that was originally discussed, just to cover ourselves, but, you know, what we're hoping is that it comes in way under that, at, you know, two seventy-five, or even close to three hundred thousand, we do expect the savings, and that savings would go back into the general fund.
And then just for the record, the city manager did obtain two bids, was it two bids that we did?
Actually, what we ended up doing is buying the generator off of the state bid, so they go out and they get bids on all these different commodities, and they actually had a bid for emergency backup generators that is the size that we need, so we're just buying it off the state bid, they checked with other vendors just to make sure the state bid was competitive, and that's probably where the two other quotes were coming from, but the state had the best deal.
I remember that form that you had passed out to us at one of the meetings prior that the cost had run about anywhere from two fifty to maybe two seventy-five.
Correct.
And so I just wanted to clarify that.
And I think that's about where they're at, and I think the only thing I need to clarify on, I think this expenditure was authorized to come out of the reserves, and so if we do get reimbursed seventy-five percent of the project as we're planned to, that money would go back into the reserves, not the general fund, as I mentioned.
Okay.
So wherever the money comes out of, it'll come back and replace it.
Okay, thank you.
The second item is the new server at City Hall that was needed, the other server that we had was hacking up and, you know, getting up there in years, and needed something more stronger, and that was, you know, just this past August, twenty-nine thousand, seven sixty-three, we also had a capital improvement, repair Crystal Island Bridge, which was also an emergency that came before the board in May, and that was a hundred and sixty-four thousand, two eighty-four, that had to be repaired, and the generator, fire generator at the firehouse, which got attacked by rats that ate up the insides of it, that was twenty-six thousand, eight twenty-five, a little bit of a footnote there, we really didn't have a maintenance agreement prior to that attack of the rodents, and now we do, we have better structures that would prevent the intrusion, but we now have a monthly, a quarterly inspection by a separate service that will keep that, to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
I have another question, I'm sorry, on the generator for the fire department, how often do they normally run it, just to make sure it's workable?
Weekly, once a week.
Weekly, so if they should run it every week, and all of a sudden discover that there's another problem, they should be able to tackle it right from the beginning?
That's correct.
Okay, so definitely it wasn't done that way last time?
That's correct, and they keep a log of when they inspect the generator and when they run it, and then they do, I think it's monthly or quarterly, they do the full load test, where, you know, it starts up just like a regular, you know, emergency generator would, normally they run it on a weekly basis, where they'll start it, and they call it exercising the generator, and the only thing that's different is the transfer switch, there's an automatic transfer switch that brings the power into the building from the generator, but they don't do that all the time, that's done on a monthly or quarterly basis, but I think it's monthly, but I just wanted to make sure I give you all the correct information.
I'm sorry, Walter, you can continue.
Okay, and then going forward...
We're double teaming you here.
I have a question.
Okay.
Is anybody looking at any other places that the rats could be damaging that unbeknownst to us?
Any other places?
Yeah, because if the rats there, there's gotta be other places.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point, for the new generator that we get for City Hall, we want to make sure that that's properly, that there's no access ways that rodents could get into that, so we've kind of learned our lesson from that standpoint, so, you know, we'll be on the lookout for that, but that generator also will have a quarterly maintenance agreement too, so, I mean, that's kind of the environment that we live in, that these things happen.
By the water and that.
Right, so we just have to be aware of sensitive items and just plan accordingly. I didn't really know until I saw it how much of a damage that they did to that one over the fire department, I mean, I saw pictures of that and saw it firsthand, and was just, couldn't realize that they would do something like that, so, and going forward, also with the fire department, we had another emergency with the concrete approaches, front and back of the fire station, and the pavement was sinking, and concrete approaches had to be installed, front and back, to prevent any possible damage to our new fire truck, and that was sixty-three thousand, five hundred, a little bit of that money, too, is going toward repairing some of the caulking and of the, around the border of the fire station, to make sure that it doesn't sink any more than what it already is, it is sinking a little bit, and so some of that work is being done too, as well, in combination with this.
Director, that, the sixty-three thousand, five hundred, that was that seventy-five thousand that was originally set on that, because the asphalt, as soon as it was, I mean, way before a year was up on the new construction of this entire complex, that had already started sagging, and there was no insurance or nothing to cover it, so that's where that original seventy-five thousand was built in, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, and then now it's gone down to sixty-three thousand?
This is the only emergency item that was budgeted amongst all of these, I'm basically asking, the seventy-five thousand you mentioned was put in a non-departmental, and I'm just, by this entry, this entry is transferring it out of non-departmental and putting it in to the fire department.
Right.
But, you know, again, as you indicated, we did experience some savings there between the seventy-five thousand and the sixty-three thousand, five hundred, also, number six on this list is the garbage truck that was needed, that was brought to the board back in February, and this, it takes a while to get a truck like this, usually five or six months, so you have to put in order well in advance, and we're expecting this any time now, this was the first truck, also, in next year's budget, two thousand and twenty, there's another truck, so the two trucks that we had, we had reached a point where they just both needed to be replaced as soon as possible, so that's the purpose of that item, and again, that was an emergency, stormwater drainage, number seven, stormwater drainage and road improvements at the Parsley Stormwater Project that was brought to the board back in May, that was two hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty, so these are the, these are basically seven items that were, again, emergency in nature, by the way, I just want to make a comment on your original exhibit, on the fire concrete approaches in the middle of the page, that sixty-three, five hundred, I had to make an adjustment to that, it was fifty-nine thousand, one fifty, so your original sheet that you got reflected an error, because that fifty-nine, one fifty that was on your original sheet was incorrect, and should have been a total of sixty-three thousand, five hundred, so the document that I sent out to you that says nine thirty, two thousand and nineteen, WP, that's the most current one and correct one. I will say this too, for your information, we will have another year-end budget amendment in November, within our sixty-day statutory limit, which will be mainly miscellaneous cleanup, after all FY two thousand and nineteen payments have been made, and after year-end, adjusting entries have been made by finance, there's quite a few adjusting entries that we make at the end of the year, for insurance, OPEV, and a couple of other things that we do, and they have an impact on budgets, so that's the reason for that final amendment, any questions from the board?
We'll open it for a public comment.
Robert Preston, four twenty-five, South Bay Shore Drive, Madeira Beach, just a couple of things, the, as far as the garbage truck for two forty, if we're gonna cancel the recycling, which was roughly, what, a hundred and forty-four, so would that be, come off this two forty? Or how does, would that be an adjustment there?
The, if they decide not to do the recycling, there would be money that would come back into the fund to, you know, be decided on, you know, if it would go into reserves, or go back into the capital account, I'm not sure, but that decision hasn't been made as yet, but I can find out what would happen if...
Actually, this is our truck, the recyclings are done by waste...
That's right, they don't use our trucks.
So this is our truck, and actually, if that recycling goes away, there'll be more of a burden on our trucks.
Well, what happens with the money, though, when, if it goes away, that money is added to the utility bills, correct, and goes to the subcontractor, so that money wouldn't be collected from the residents anymore, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it would just, it would be a credit to the bills, current contract ends December thirtieth, or thirty-first, I think, so...
And then just one other comment, other cities I've worked with, as far as capital expenditures on equipment, I know we have a leasing program with the cars and stuff, but as far as a garbage truck, and I know dealing with the fire department in the cities that I've been in in the past, they put money aside every single year, so that when that vehicle is needed, it's not an emergency fund, it's not a surprise, all the money is always there, so we don't have a program set up in the city for that?
We do have a capital improvement program, and that's what the fire truck that we're buying this year is under, for some reason, I guess, that the original fire truck that was, fire truck, I'm sorry, the original garbage truck that was replaced during the, earlier in this budget year, the two thousand and nineteen budget year, I guess...
Both of these, both of these trucks were a couple of years out, I think we thought we could get a couple more years out of them.
Because of the rust or something?
Yeah, but that's, that just didn't come to, just didn't happen, but I think...
So there is, so there is a fund that you're putting money into every single year, but it's just not sufficient?
Well, we were planning on replacing these two right along, within the next couple of years, but we really didn't expect it to happen this quick.
But yes, to answer your question, yes.
Thank you.
Would anybody else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed.
Any more discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I would just like to comment also on that, on the purchase or the requisition for the sanitation for the garbage truck, certainly, yes, the city has had, as we commented to Mr. Preston, the provision to put into the fund garbage trucks and all other maintenance vehicles, but quite often, in the past, and if we look at history, tells us in our previous budgets, although there might have been money in there for it, very often, I think our two sanitation trucks, one's eight years old and the other one's twelve years old, is, we have to be more proactive with replacing vehicles such as sanitation trucks, because it's the livelihood in the city, I mean, we have more residents, we have more, you know, tourists, we have more visitors, and we have to... And we have to keep the sanitation truck the most current and the best we can get it. So I was certainly for that.
I'll take it.
Any more discussion? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to pass Resolution 2019-15.
Second. Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Dowdard?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Blaine?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor and Commissioners, if I may say, I do very much appreciate, kind of relieved that the budget process for 2020 is over and look forward to, you know, next year, next, tomorrow, actually, starting the new year.
Thank you. Any no further business?
I have something. Last week at the workshop with our legal bills, there was a bill that came up that was in question. So I did some work with both the city clerk and our finance director. That's the information you have in front of you. Basically, put a cover memo to that. And I thought this, I'd leave this with you. And we can discuss it at a future meeting. I know the agenda is going out today or did it go out already? Do the Commissioners have their copies?
It has not gone out yet. I'm still waiting on some information from the Board.
Okay, so you should be getting the agenda already today. If you want me to add it to the agenda for the eighth, we can for discussion. Or, you know, I'm just looking for direction as to what policy we want to set in the future.
Do you want to recap for the people watching what this is about?
Sure. This is about a check that was found issued for a member of a board that's on the Civil Service Commission and the legal expenses that involve the complaint against that member and a member of our staff. And the bill was dropped off in the finance and came back to the clerk who oversees that board or actually commission and got approved and was paid. And I just mentioned to the, my peers here that, you know, I think you all should know if we're gonna set a policy on how we're gonna pay our bills, if we're gonna pay legal bills for things that occur outside the scope of a volunteer or an employee for their legal staff, then I think that's something that the board should decide on, not the manager and not, or your other constitutional officers. Or charter officers, I'm sorry.
So this is something we need to put on the agenda to make a policy decision?
I think, right. And just let me know. And if we're good to go, I'm good to go. It's, but I think it's just a decision that this commission has to decide.
I think we need to go forward with that.
So would you like for me to put this on the eighth, then? Or do you want to do a special meeting sometime in the future?
Do we have a consensus to do that?
If this is all, if this is all the information that we're gonna be, you know, given, then yes, I think based on reading it and understanding it, unless I have any questions, I'll, I think that the October the eighth meeting, we can discuss it.
And then I, the only additional thing, I'd like to notice those parties that are involved. So if they want to be here under the discussion.
Since this is up now, we're gonna be actually discussing during a regular Board of Commission, don't you feel like it should go to a workshop where it'd be open for discussion instead of at a regular Board of Commission meeting?
It's totally up to the Commissioners. I'm not telling you which meeting or, you know, I was just giving you options. So we can do it at the workshop meeting if you'd like to do that as well.
But typically, we discuss it at a workshop and then again at the regular meeting. So I don't, in this case...
You think so?
Okay.
In a way, it's open discussion for everybody at a regular Board of Commission meeting. It's hard to really sit down and discuss this in detail.
Okay.
Then we'll go for a workshop.
That'd be great.
Any more business?
So we're asking the city manager to put it on the October 20th? On the October workshop, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't remember the date.
Okay, I can't either.
Surprised you can remember what country you're in.
Okay.
I'll add it to the agenda-setting meeting, too. That goes out today or tomorrow, whenever I get that information, we'll find out.
Thank you, Claire.
Any no further business?
Oh, I have a. The, there's gonna be some proposed charter amendments that I'm taking to the Charter Review Committee meeting, board on October the 7th in here at 1:00. And they're to discuss three proposed charter amendments. One is changing the qualifying period for candidates, which qualifying period is only when they just bring everything in that they've done, they've signed petitions, everything. Because I have the, I'll have the packets ready about a month before qualifying period starts and they can get started. The presidential preference primary is every four years. And then during that time, the election times changes. The city charter says that we have our election on the second Tuesday of March. And because of the presidential preference primary, it will be the third Tuesday in March. And because the city charter, of course, it stipulates when we are to have our qualifying period, we have to count back from the new date. And the deadline for the ballot language due into the supervisory elections is January the 3rd, which is cut short. So instead of like the 30 days we're accustomed to that's in the charter, it's only 17 days and plus there's four holidays during that 17 days. You, we have four city holidays, which is, which they also, I think, do, which is Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, and New Year's Day. And then two days after the New Year's holiday, we have that qualifying period to end. So if we were to change the qualifying period, then when they, every four years when this takes place, we wouldn't have to worry about it. It'll just take place the same time every year. That'll be discussed at the charter meeting on the October the 7th at 1:00. The next one is the runoff election. In March of this year, the electorate, they voted to have our, to have the Pinellas County Supervisor of Elections to canvass our elections. They are to canvass all our elections. And the clerks had a meeting with the Supervisors of Elections in last month. And they had informed us that if there's any runoffs, they cannot assist us with that at all. We carry that whole election if we should have a runoff. And so, and that would be more than 5,000, close to $5,000 that they're charging us for that. And we have to think about that. And she, Julie Marcus, she's the Deputy Supervisor of Elections. She had explained to us that they couldn't help us at all in that. And there's only five cities left with a runoff provision in their city charter. And City Madeira Beach is one of them. So they had suggested that we remove that provision. And then all the five cities that are left that has not removed that provision or have that provision, you know, suggested that we somehow take it out, do a charter amendment. And so that would be the only way we could do it. So then I guess with no runoff, it's winner takes all. If you get one more point, you know, you take it. Then the third one is, it was recommended at the May workshop meeting that the term, the two-year term for district commissioners be changed to either three or four years. And so that's one of the items that will be discussed at the Charter Review Committee meeting on October the 7th. And I'm hoping to bring, if we get all that squared away in October, on October the 7th, that allows me enough time to prepare the proposed ordinance with the charter amendment sent and get it approved by Ralph and bring it to the board. Or we can also discuss it at the workshop meeting, the ordinance itself, in October, and then go for a first reading in November at the regular meeting. That'll be up to you.
Are they gonna have to change the charter in regards to, I don't know, the charter reads three terms or six years for a commission? I'm not sure. If it reads six years, then that needs to be changed.
The new, as of March of 2019, if you're talking, if you're referring to the...
Yeah, the things that were passed, yeah.
Okay, start, as of March of 2019, each commissioner can only run three consecutive terms if they should...
Okay, so it's terms, not years, okay.
That is correct. The terms that I'm referencing is, and speaking to, are your two-year, the mayor's three-year. Yes.
Yeah, but if it was six years, I, because of three terms, then if you wait and change it to four, then they need to go back and readjust.
That, all the, yes, that's correct. All that will be adjusted, and same way with the qualifying period. I would rather, instead of having 90 days before and 60 day, no less, no more than 60, 90 days and no less than 60 days. Some of the, I did a survey with the five peer cities. You know, you adopted a resolution this year for us to check with each one of those to see what they're doing and what their charter says or, you know, and different things with fees and everything. I checked with them. And so I think that everything will pan out to what we're trying to do. And I don't think any of those cities has their qualifying period past the second week of December. They get it out of the way. We're one of the last ones at the last minute. And on the qualifying, I mean, at the end of the qualifying period, which is normally our second Friday in the January, as stipulated in the city charter, they're waiting on me. I can't even leave my seat till about 10 or 11 o'clock because the people that's publishing the ballot, they're waiting on me. And then once they get it all set up, they send it back to me and I have to approve it. And then it goes, they start printing it because our overseas voters gets theirs first. They get theirs first. So we're like pushing them. And plus, it's during a holiday, you know, through a holiday period and everything. So if we get that changed, if the voter should go for it, we get that changed, we won't have to worry about Christmas and New Years and the, when the presidential elections are held, you know, for those years.
Are the other peer cities changing as well, do you know?
I know, well, Julia had mentioned to us about the runoff. The, I looked at theirs, and which I'll put it on the memo. Theirs is not during our period. Theirs is like, I think one of them was like November. There's only like five to 10 days for their whole qualifying period. And so by adjusting, I don't think theirs goes into the holidays, but I would look at that. But I think the last one is like the second week of December. So if theirs moved for a week, that goes to the third week of December. So, but I will, I'll add that to the memo, to my report and everything. Put something in your box about it. At least you'll have that before we start discussing that at the Charter Review Committee meeting and before the workshop in October.
City Clerk, I would think it might be a good, maybe a good suggestion or recommendation to provide the Charter Committee members with that same thing that you provide us with so that they can look at it prior to the time as well. Because I remember when you had presented to us, six months ago it must be, a recommendation by Commissioner Hodges to revise that period of requiring, you know, the, what do you call it? The preliminary period, the, for, you know, for candidate, qualifying period.
Qualifying period, yeah, that was in May.
Right, so I remember when that happened. And I still have all that information. But I think that it would be very helpful to supply the Charter Committee members, along with the Board of Commissioners, to know what we're facing and what the options are.
Correct. That is, that is the purpose of preparing that. I'm gonna give you the same thing that I'm giving to them because I'm preparing their packet now because I need to get that out no later than Thursday for their meeting on Monday at 1:00. So I've been working on that. And so, and got my study down, done and everything. So you'll get a copy of that. And then I'll let you know what they say and everything, what the feedback is for the workshop.
Anybody have anything else to discuss? All right, the meeting is adjourned at 2:38.